Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, January 30th, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting work sessions on the Smart Parking and Mobility Master Plan and the Historic Millwork District Master Plan.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for January 30th, 2023. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Thank you. Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our first work session topic is the Smart Parking and Mobility Master Plan update. I will turn it over to Transportation Services Director Ryan Nuckey.
Ryan Nuckey, Director of Transportation Services. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager Van Milligan. Corey, good to have you back. Steve Sampson Brown, Russ Declan, and I are very excited to have Walker Consulting tonight here to do a presentation on the Smart Parking Mobility Plan for the city. I will be introducing Kevin White in a second. He is the lead for the Walker Consulting team. Walker Consulting, RDG, and Bolton &amp; Mink were awarded this plan through an RFP process a couple months ago. The main focus of this process and plan is to focus on smart parking technology for our ramp slots and our meters. We have some aging technology out there and it'd be really nice to get a facelift on it. But there is a secondary focus because when somebody parks their car, they still have to get from point A to point B. So we're looking at the mobility of this. How are people going to walk, bike, rollerblade, use our transit systems? So there is a mobility section to this plan that we're collecting themes on. Our current system, we run seven parking ramps, ramps, sorry, nineteen surface slots and over 2,000 metered spaces. Our parking ramps have three different software programs in them, and some of these programs are starting to become more obsolete as we go forward. We struggle to get daily parts to fix our current physical ramp technology and not only the technology, but actually even our gates that we operate. With the help of my team, but a huge thanks to Chris Coleman's team from the IT side, we're able to keep these ramps up and running daily. With that, Russ and I and Steve, definitely Russ, is very excited to see what Walker Consulting can do for us and what technology they can bring to town. We're looking at current state processes, but as we look forward, we want to make sure that this system not only helps Dubuque in its current state, but also 15, 20 years down the road. Because like our current systems, we plan on keeping it that long as long as we can keep it up to date. And with that, I want to turn it over to Kevin White from Walker Consulting. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. I am Kevin White. I'm a parking mobility consultant with Walker Consultants. I'm here with my colleague Eric Haggott from Walker Consultants and Kenny Okibo from RDG Planning and Design. We're going to provide an update on the Smart Parking and Mobility Management Plan specifically on the key takeaways as we end the first phase of our project. So we have branded this project Move DBQ, so you may have seen some of that branding. You'll see more of that branding here tonight. From an agenda standpoint, we're going to provide a reminder of how the project came about. We're going to talk about giving you an overview of the current parking and mobility system really as a level set. We are going to provide a summary of our stakeholder engagement as part of Phase One of our process. Also talk about our system technical review. So our review of your system, your operations, your policy and management practices. And we're going to end with a discussion on what the next steps are, what the focus areas are as we move into Phase Two. So there's a lot of information here. If you have questions as we go, feel free to interject. So from an introduction standpoint, we did respond to an RFP that went live in late 2021. The RFP articulated the development of a smart parking and mobility management plan, as Ryan indicated, with a focus on parking. This is to include a current conditions analysis, evaluation of new technology, financial assessment, and really a final plan with technology, policy, and program recommendations. The goal, as Ryan said, is to move into design and procurement implementation of new technology after this process is over. There are a variety of guiding principles in the RFP that we do refer ourselves to constantly as part of this process. I'm not going to read these word for word, but they're really important guiding principles that we constantly remind ourselves of, making sure that parking is a key ingredient of downtown being economically viable. Parking needs to be a partnership between the public and private sector. We need to really prioritize equitability and inclusivity when we look at access and parking and mobility. We need to make sure that we're meeting the needs of a diverse group of users. We just met with some seniors today at Stone Hill and heard their perspectives, for example. Parking needs to be fully integrated with transit and other modes of transportation. Ryan talked about the importance of that. Parking and mobility, this is a key one, is not free. The system is not free. It costs money to maintain the system, to operate the system. So we need to ensure that an equitable revenue structure is established, both for the user as well as for the city. We need to make sure we use up-to-date technology. That's really important from an operations perspective. We need to make sure that we're promoting safety for customers and a business strategy that works in a post-pandemic environment. This is really critical because the game has really changed over the last few years from a parking demand standpoint. In terms of outcomes, as mentioned, there are two primary thrusts of the work, parking and mobility. The focus really is on the parking side. We are going to deliver recommendations, a work plan, a revenue model for the city, but specifically technology recommendations and an implementation action plan. So really a prioritized implementation action plan to help the city successfully implement after the project is over. And then on the mobility side, it's really about looking at mobility in the context of serving the overall access and parking and connectivity system downtown. So how do we promote comfort and safety from a mobility perspective? So we're going to be identifying themes and really actions that the city can take to continue to improve and promote safety and convenient connectivity downtown in Dubuque. A few definitions, just to kind of level set. So when we say mobility, we mean the action and specifically the ability of a person to move or be moved. Transportation is the act of moving something or someone, so a little bit of a nuance there. From a parking perspective, you'll hear us say the term parking demand. This is the raw count of parked vehicles observed at a given time in a given facility. And then the term parking utilization, we often use this interchangeably with parking occupancy. So this is the proportion of spaces in a given facility that are occupied by parked vehicles at a given time. So we go and we count the number of parked vehicles at a given time, say 10:00 AM, and we divide that by the total number of spaces to get the utilization. This is a very common metric used in the parking industry to determine efficiency and just how spaces are being utilized. From a study area perspective, we are focused on downtown Dubuque from about 19th on the north to about Locust on the south, the Bluff, so Bluff Street on the west, Elm on the east. This is our primary focus area. That's not to say that we're not, you know, considering elements outside of downtown. Certainly, the Jewel operates transit outside of downtown, so we are considering that as well. From a project schedule standpoint, we are towards the end of Phase One right now. We're coalescing around key themes, key findings, major opportunities, really finishing our conditions assessment and our discovery phase of what's going on here in Dubuque. What are the needs, issues, and opportunities? The next phase is, I think, the fun phase. We're going to be evaluating and developing options and scenarios, talking through ideas, exploring ideas and new practices. We have advisory groups, a few advisory groups set up with city staff, key community partners that are going to participate in that vetting process. And then Phase Three is really about documenting recommendations, documenting that path forward for successful implementation. The goal is to move into some sort of technology implementation, sort of in the middle to latter half of 2023. Are there any questions on kind of the setup before we pivot? There's a lot of information here. Okay, so just as a level set, the current parking mobility system, Ryan indicated some of this already. From an on-street perspective, downtown, the city does have a downtown parking district. There are some un-metered parking areas. So when I say un-metered, not paid, unpaid, does not cost anything to park in the northern part of downtown. But most of this district is paid parking. There are about 1,800 on-street paid parking spaces, metered spaces. Most of that is of the two-hour and 10-hour time limit. There are a variety of other time limits you may have seen when you've gone out there as well. But most of that is the two-hour and 10-hour time limits. The city does have eight residential permit districts as well that it manages. And then payment collection. So the way that the city takes payment in the on-street environment, just to remind folks, is the single-spaced meters as well as the mobile application on the on-street environment. For off-street parking, there are seven ramps, Ryan indicated. There are almost 4,000 spaces. Six of those ramps are downtown. We have almost 3,000 spaces downtown. The ramps provide parking for short-term, so short-term or transient, we call it transient short-term, and also contract parkers, so permit parkers. Over 30% of the ramp spaces downtown are actually reserved spaces for permit parkers. That's an important figure here tonight. There are also numerous, you'll see here the yellow on the map, numerous surface parking lots that the city owns and maintains, almost 1,600 spaces in surface parking. Many of those spaces are reserved, assigned as well. And then payment collection in the ramps, it's primarily the in-lane equipment in and out, but there are some physical meters out there in the off-street environment. From a parking footprint standpoint, so in addition to the public-private, public parking assets downtown, we looked at private parking facilities. You'll see those here in red. So we estimate there are several thousand private parking spaces in downtown, serving a variety of uses. And so you can just see the significant coverage of both public parking. So public is indicated in blue and yellow, and private parking is the red. We actually digitized all of the private parking assets. And so the goal, one of the primary goals is really to look at ways to improve the overall use efficiency of all of this parking, whether it's public or private. From a mobility standpoint, of course, we are looking at mobility, but really in the context of serving the overall parking and access transportation system downtown. Of course, the city does provide transit service through the Jewel, hundreds of bus stops, mini-bus service, and then of course, a network of sidewalks and of bicycle, marked bicycle facilities downtown as well. And then finally, from what have we done so far here in Phase One, really a two-pronged process as part of Phase One. We've done all the internal and external stakeholder engagement, so you might have seen our survey. We've done listening sessions. We did a bike ride. Council member Resnick was on the bike ride with us. We really enjoyed that. We did an event at the Night Market in October. We also did our system technical review. So when we work in any community, we review your policies and your program, your finances. Really, how are you managing the system? I asked Ryan Nuckey and Russ for lots of data, and they were gracious to share that. We reviewed all that information in accordance with our information and our data from around the country. We collected a lot of data in the system here. We were onsite collecting actual utilization data as well, and we'll share some of that here in a minute. But it's really those two main elements of the Phase One work that we've completed. So at this point, I'm going to pause. I'm going to hand it to Kenny from RDG. He's going to walk through the stakeholder process and the results that we heard from that process. Thank you.
I promise, Kevin's actually taller than me. Good evening, and thank you for the time to be able to speak with all of you. My name is Kenny Okibo. I'm a landscape architect with RDG Planning and Design. Our contribution to this team, as Kevin mentioned, has been partially urban design, but a big focus on stakeholder engagement and the engagement and public input process. Looking at the top half of the diagram, that process is laid out for you where we held a STEP event in July, that was July 5th. We held in-person interviews and then also a public input survey, which Kevin alluded to as well. The event with the STEP program held two sessions where we essentially asked teens what their perspective is as it pertains to moving through Dubuque. How do you get from point A to point B? And all of the participants were under 17, and bear that number in mind when we pivot to the survey and we look at who responded to that. Next, I'd like to talk about some of the themes as it pertains to those in-person sessions that we held. So we held meetings with, now 39 after we went with a group of our senior members of the community. And from those sessions, we broke down the common themes into two categories, parking-related themes and then mobility-related themes. As I go through this, you're going to hear a few words like several, multiple, numerous, most, and nearly all. And to make it a bit simpler, what we've done is, when we say several, we mean approximately, or at least three. When we say multiple, three to five, numerous, at least half.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So our system just crashed, so could we take a pause here to see if we can get it back up, so?
Yes, absolutely. Ken, very sorry. We aren't able to broadcast the video feed the way that we've done before. We aren't able to broadcast on any other social media or anything like that. But what we can do, and what we're going to try to do here, is record using the go-to-meeting function that we have. So we are recording this meeting still. We are trying to broadcast that meeting through our go-to-meeting link that we have. We also want to make it clear that the agenda and all the documents and everything that you need are all right here on the website where you can locate the agendas for the City Council meetings. So hopefully everybody has that information. Thank you very much to the IT team and the public information team for working hard to try to figure this out. We will do our very best to make sure this doesn't happen again, but thank you again for your patience. And I guess at this point, we can just continue on. I believe I heard Randy say, we'd like you to start, Kenny, at a specific point, the engagement piece of it, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so if you could just back up to there, we'd really appreciate it, and we'll move along.
My pleasure. No, thanks for figuring everything out.
So talking about stakeholder engagement and giving a summary as to all of that. So we hosted three types of engagement opportunities. Number one, in-person interviews. Number two, STEP event, which I'll talk about in a moment, and then also the public input survey. In July of 2022, we hosted an event which brought in teens from the area and asked them how they engaged with mobility in Dubuque. So how they moved from location A to location B, and then also what some of the challenges they faced in doing so were. Beyond that single-day discussion, we've also held about 39 meetings with groups and individuals over the last number of months. And what we've done is we've synthesized those into themes that are broken into two categories, parking and then mobility. As I go through those themes, you'll note that I'll be using different keywords. Several, I generally mean at least three. Multiple, I mean three to five. Numerous, what we mean by that is at least half. With most, approximately 70% have stated this. And then nearly all means approximately 90%. So in talking about parking, parking convenience was a big piece as it pertained to different groups of individuals that we spoke with. When speaking with downtown employers and employees, convenience was very high on priority. When talking to downtown retail and business owners, and then also when talking to those that are thinking about tourism in downtown, the proximity to events was also important. But also, one of the pieces as it pertained to downtown tourism specifically that we found interesting was being willing to walk a little bit more than individuals that are going for work per se. And then, one of the pieces that we found interesting when speaking with downtown developers was the want or the request for more access to existing parking facilities. In the slides which I'm about to talk through, just to make it a bit simpler, we've broken it into usually three or four tiers. But I'll run through all of these, and then if there are any questions, I'll be happy to address them. So most respondents acknowledge that there's ample parking in downtown Dubuque. There is generally parking available most of the time. Parking meters are serving their purpose, but they could be improved. The parking meters do what they need to do, but there's opportunities to make them better, whether that be updating the technology. But most appreciate the flexibility that they're able to use both the coin option and then also the app. And then parking meter length of stay are generally serving their purpose. Parking ramps provide sufficient parking inventory. We'll see a bit more information where Kevin has dived into the quantifiable metrics, but there are parking spaces. Communication of parking-related information could be improved. As individuals are coming up to parking spaces, but then also as individuals are thinking about the expansive parking system, there are questions about how to not only use it, but which spaces are for them. One example from a respondent, they weren't sure if the intermodal ramp specifically was a public ramp that they had access to. Existing parking ramp technology causes customer service and maintenance issues. There's opportunities for advancing that. And parking operations should be improved to boost economic development, thinking about multifamily development, and increase downtown vibrancy. So as we were speaking to different groups, specifically as we were speaking to groups that were representing development, the ability to access existing parking infrastructure for residential purposes is something that would be highly desired from development groups. Off-street parking management should be improved. So this respondents, specifically looking at the residential development community, see an opportunity to change the operations and management of parking facilities, such as overselling or sharing parking infrastructure. The concept of shared parking has support. So this goes back to the theme that I was just talking about, where different groups had noted that if it was possible to make use of some of the existing locks and ramps, they would be open to that conversation. Then future on-street parking technology should be forward-thinking, yet multi-generational. Kevin and I had the opportunity to meet with some of our seniors in the community, and one of the pieces that came out from that discussion was stating, I don't want to use card, I don't trust using card, and I would prefer using coin. So I, it's a bit straightforward, but it needs to be understood that as we're thinking about opportunities down the line, we need to be thinking about both ends of the spectrum, those that are very tech savvy, and then also those that want to have that analog opportunity. From here, I'm going to transition to thinking, to talking about mobility themes. Were there any questions about what I went through on the front end before I do so?
So far?
Sounds good. So the Jewel Transportation System is well-run, but is often underused or not used at all. I will remind you that this is, these are statements that we have received, and this is not an assessment or a, this is not an assessment of the system itself. This is just what people are saying about the system. To the point of the Jewel Transportation System working really well, one group that spoke really highly of it was when we were speaking with educators and representatives of the school system, noting that having the Jewel as a way for students that don't have access to the standard bus line, a school bus line, having the Jewel as an option for them to commute to school is well-used and well-received. One more point on that, they also noted that they would be interested in seeing expanded Jewel options specifically for students that don't have access to other routes home for extracurricular activities, knowing that some students that are in lower socioeconomic groups are unable to participate in those extracurricular activities because they don't have that means of commuting. Pedestrian-centric connectivity is a missing piece. Respondents often voiced concern for the lack of connectivity in downtown. So connecting from like Lower Main to Millwork or Central to Schmidt Island, or Bee Branch to Millwork as well, were opportunities that individuals and respondents mentioned wanting. Lighting improvements were identified as a key to improving pedestrian perception of safety, and there was acknowledgement for areas where lighting has been improved and individuals do feel safer. Downtown would benefit from additional bicycle lanes. So multiple respondents indicated that Dubuque's streets are generally wide, and there's the opportunity for increasing the ability to bike from point A to point B. And then pedestrian-centric strategies are desired. This goes back to the, to a previous theme, but one respondent summed this up generally by Dubuque pride, thinking about how individuals are able to move from point A to point B, not necessarily only inside of a vehicle, but thinking about the pedestrian experience from those two general locations. Consistent, uniform wayfinding and signage is a necessary upgrade. So this goes back to the point of communication and how individuals know how to use the system. There are a few different standards that exist out right now, and there's the opportunity to consolidate those into one cohesive voice. And driver behavior creates an unsafe environment for biking on streets in Dubuque. When you think about those that bike, there are those that love biking, that they will bike just about anywhere and they will always feel safe. And then there are people like me who need a little bit of a buffer. So noting that, what some respondents were noting is that whether it be general traffic behaviors or road speeds, or the speed of traffic, respondents, some respondents felt unsafe with biking as-is right now. Respondents desired bike lanes and trails. So there is a trail system in Dubuque, but there's the opportunity for expansion. And then, most men feel safe in downtown. Some women expressed concerns as it pertained to safety. As we were speaking to respondents, there was one respondent who noted that walking in Dubuque was as safe as walking in the arms of Jesus himself, was the quote. But then on the other side, there was a female respondent who noted that when they walk in downtown Dubuque, that they route their path ahead of time, that they are thinking of where there is ample lighting, and they're also thinking of where the code blue phones are. So there's both ends of this conversation, and as we move forward, it's something that we're cognizant of. From the mobility side, are there any questions that I can answer before I touch on the public input survey?
Excellent.
So we're really, we were shooting for somewhere between 500 and 1,000 responses, and 823 is success, I'd say. What you're seeing on screen are some of the backing demographics of who responded to the survey. Who are the 823? From the individuals that we spoke with on those one-on-one or in-person, and sometimes virtual conversations, most of them lean toward the right side of the top-left graph that you're seeing. So their household income was likely over 100,000. The reason why we were so gung-ho on making sure this survey went out and trying to get as broad of a brush as we could, was to make sure that as we were collecting responses, as broad of a brush as we could, was to make sure that as we were collecting responses, we had individuals that were also responding that had a household income that was less than the $100,000. What you're seeing on the top right is the bell curve graph of who responded. Just going to remind you that we did hold that step event earlier in the summer, which is addressing that under 17 range that we were nilled out there. And then, as we look at the racial and ethnic spread as it pertains to those that responded to the survey, it does fairly closely match what we're seeing in Dubuque, even though in the survey, I believe that the Black and African-American populace was about 2% off of what is actually seen, and we were off by about 10% in the Caucasian range. But in general, it does match what we see in Dubuque. With that, we asked the question of what part of town do you live in, then also what part of town do you work in? And what we see here is that most of our respondents generally live above the bluff and then they're commuting downtown. When asking respondents to rank amongst the price of parking, so low price or free, the convenience or the proximity to destination of parking, and then also the certainty that parking will be available, what was most important was the low-price slash free parking, marginally though. So, note that options one and two, so low price and convenience, were almost the same, but low price did edge out. When ranking parking features based on, excuse me, when ranking parking access features based on ramps and lots in downtown, what was most important was ease of finding parking. When we ranked payment features, what was most important was the ability to pay for parking or extend parking session using a mobile app. What's interesting about this is that, to some capacity, we already do offer this feature where an individual, if they are parking in a four-hour zone and they only paid for one hour, they can extend the additional time. The nuance in this is that it, what respondents might be asking for is the ability to extend beyond a zoned time. So, that would lend itself to that conversation around education on why the system operates the way that it does. When asking individuals to rate safety, feeling physically safe from crime is what was at the top of the list, followed by having well-lit facilities, then followed by concern for vehicle damage. And then, from that string of questions, we asked them to rank between safety, the parking access features, and then the parking payment features, which was most important to you, and safety was at the top of that list. From there, we asked the question of how far are you willing to walk from your vehicle to work, as opposed to how far are you willing to walk from your vehicle to non-work activities? And zero to three blocks is about the range that respondents noted that they were comfortable walking as it pertained to walking from your vehicle to work, though when you are walking from your vehicle to non-work activities, interestingly enough, you're more likely to walk a bit further. Following that question up, we asked if we were to update the parking technology, would you be willing to walk one or two blocks further? And the majority of respondents, almost 70%, said yes. From there, we asked the question, what barriers or reasons discourage you from walking further? And number one, I think that we all felt this today, weather. Number two, not feeling safe in a particular area of downtown. And number three, just general preference of parking closer to the destination. What we are highlighting in this red rectangle are some of the items as they pertain to the built environment, which are able to be addressed by making physical changes. We are not able to change the weather by the power in our hands, but lighting, traffic speed, sidewalks, and crosswalks are things that we are able to change through built We asked the question of would you consider using a different mode of transportation other than your personal vehicle to travel to work? And the majority of individuals stated no. Going to work, I want to take my car. What was interesting here was that zero individuals that responded to the survey did not have a personal vehicle. That responded to the survey and responded to this question did not have a personal Asking if of those that would use a different mode of transportation, what type of transportation would you use? Bicycle roads to the top, followed fairly closely by public transportation and then When asking the same question, but in the context of would you use a different mode of transportation when going to social, retail, recreation, or entertainment activities? 54% stated yes. We would use a different form of transportation for non-work activities. And then, if so, what type of transportation would you be open to using? Walking was at the top of this list, followed closely again by public transportation and then bicycling. Lastly, or almost lastly, we asked the question of what barriers discourage you from using an alternative mode of transportation? And as you might expect, time and schedule was at the top of the list. I need to get there by 8:00 AM, and I need to make sure that I'm getting there by 8:00 AM. It's all within my power. Lastly, we had two questions where we asked respondents, tell us what we haven't asked you already. If there's something that we haven't stated that you want us to know, please let us know what it is. And a few of these, and these are, I just want to note that if a text is larger, that does not denote that more people have stated it, but multiple people stated each of these. So, being unsure where all the parking, where all the public parking is in the downtown area is a concern for some individuals. Some individuals were asking for more EV parking. Some individuals were trying to speak on behalf of tourists and other visitors to Dubuque, and noted that they routinely comment negatively on the large number of parking ramps and Some individuals noted that parking should be free, or that there should be some type of more equitable pay structure as it pertains to parking. I want to hold on this just for a moment to state that some stated, "We want parking to be free in Dubuque or in downtown." Some stated, "We want parking to be free for the first hour or two, and then there's incrementally more cost afterwards." Some stated, "We want parking to be free for those that are less likely to be able to afford it." And some also stated, "We want parking to be free or reduced for students, whether they be high school or collegiate." So, a conversation about the rate structure is being requested. Parking downtown is a barrier to small, to many small businesses, is the view of some individuals. I think that as we're, excuse me, one of the opportunities that lies within this comment is going back to that public conversation and education as to why some of the decisions are made, and then also what are some of the effects, or expected effects to the decisions that will be made, just to make sure that they're, that the public understanding is also backed by factual realities. And then, I'll jump to the bottom comment. Please make downtown safer for women who are walking alone. This goes back to that conversation around perception and reality of safety in downtown Dubuque, and that conversation is ongoing. With that, can I answer any questions as it pertains to the public survey?
Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
So, thank you for starting and then restarting. So, the concern, when we started with Mr. White, equity and inclusivity is a goal, needs diverse groups of users as a goal. Most respondents were from above the bluff, and our most concentrated area of poverty is Ward Four, which is the majority of the downtown area. And so, there is some concern I have that we really did not necessarily get an equitable population when we look vastly across who did respond. Now, I know that sometimes it's really difficult to get folks to respond, but I do wonder, because those folks don't have cars often, they use public transit. And so, the people we're almost needing to target the most with a response didn't respond. Am I accurate in that assessment?
All, I don't want to say that it's inex, so I'll address the previous portion.
Okay.
The stakeholder one-on-ones and the in-person and virtual meetings weren't only with business owners of the largest organizations. They, we also were trying to make sure that we were including representatives of those groups that you were mentioning, so that it's really difficult to try and, and there's some overlap in those that may not have a vehicle to respond to this survey in this context, with also those that may not have the access to technology to respond to an online survey, which is why we were trying to be really specific about bringing in representatives from those groups. Those groups including those that are, we had respondents that were representing those that were coming from recidivism, those that are unhoused, those that are, well, we have another meeting tomorrow with representatives who are going to be speaking on behalf of the Marshallese community. So, to address that comment, knowing that we won't necessarily be able to pull all of that from the public survey, we wanted to really hear that directly from them and those representatives.
Okay, great. And then, my next question, or I guess, concern related to safety for women. So, as a healthcare provider and mother of teenage daughters, I very specifically educate my children on how to walk down a street, how to not be distracted, how to make sure that you're always aware of your surroundings. Our students should do that on college campuses, we should do that no matter where we walk and who we are. And so, those comments to me are smart comments and not fearful comments, more thoughtful comments. And so, I don't walk away with that comment or those concerns with fear so much as folks are educated about how to be aware of their surroundings, and I appreciate that. And I do want to create those emergency call lights. I would do think that creating more lighting is important related to that concern, because that's what I educate my own daughters on. The other question that I had for you though, we mentioned, or folks mentioned, the free parking question. Do other municipalities offer overall free parking, discounted parking for students? I'm just not aware of that. So, I was curious as to what your experience with other municipalities is.
Sure. Thanks. Can you address that, please? So, I would say, yes, there are programs out there certainly targeted at like reduced-rate types of programs, but when you get into free parking, you sort of unpack a variety of issues, right? So, one of the reasons we charge for parking is to encourage that turnover, so that's really critical, but also we have to pay for the department operations. So, I would say that there are definitely smaller communities than Dubuque that don't have paid parking, but it's typically recommended in areas where you're seeing that demand to try to get that turnover. You know, we need to maintain that access to those businesses. This is a tough one, because of course we all want parking to be free, but in this reality, you know, we have to pay for these operations. And so, I think it's about setting up a system where there are options, maybe in the busiest parts of downtown, maybe the price is a little higher, maybe as you get further out, maybe it's a little lower. There are models like that in other communities we've worked, where they're actually charging based on the demand that they're actually recording and observing out there. So, there are kind of more market-based options that you could consider, but we're certainly not at a point where we're making recommendations. But I think there's entirely, it's entirely possible to offer solutions that are reduced-rate per se, and we're going to be looking at that as we get into phase two of the process.
Well, and, I mean, obviously after this week of snow, we're well-aware that it takes a lot of folks to get out at midnight and go clear those parking spaces to make sure that the next day they are available for citizens. And so, I don't at all mean to say that I think that that model needs to be incorporated, because I don't necessarily, but I do think that it's good to know what other communities of our size do. So, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. It's a great question.
I actually want to bounce back real quick to the first question that Ms. Wethel asked, because I have another way of asking it that I'm curious about. You know, so the, I think the graph you're basically speaking to is on the slide 46, upper-left corner. That's the different income ranges, I believe. I guess my question is, does that, does the response rate of those various income groups match with the numbers of people who are within those income groups in the city of Dubuque? Do we know the answer to that? Because I don't know that, I don't know that number off the top of my head, you know, what the number of people who make $25,000 to $49,000 and so forth.
Excellent question. I'll admit that I don't have that answer on the top of my head, but I'll gladly get that answer for you.
I think that would be helpful, because if it does, then I think that, that colors that in a different light in a way, because I think it shows that it kind of matches with, if that response rate matches, then we've kind of hit the cross-section of the population that we may want a little bit more. So, if you could, we'd appreciate getting that information.
No, good question. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then, so, I'll go a couple more questions, but I do want to, I think I'll point out though too, as we, if we stop and ask too many questions at one point, those questions might be answered a little bit later in the presentation. So, I want to make sure that we think of that before we ask too many questions right now, but that doesn't mean I'm not going to let you ask them. So, Ms. Wethel.
I had a, I had a question on slide 59 that you just brought up. It said, "Eliminate some parking lots ramps and put in protected bike lanes." I just wondered, is that the kind of thing that would be addressed in this survey? I have heard residents asking questions like that, and I wondered if it would be addressed in this mobility portion of the survey.
Just a clarification, are you asking if that would be addressed in a final plan, or?
Is that the kind of thing that is being looked at in this study?
I think that, I would say not probably specifically, no. I mean, I think there are opportunities when we show the parking occupancy data, I mean, I think there are opportunities to look at the overall system, particularly the off-street public surface lot system. Some of those lots are quite underutilized, and so it might be possible to think about different uses of some of those parking lots. There are certain street corridors that frankly aren't getting a ton of on-street parking demand, so can we use those corridors in a different way? I mean, if there's only two cars parking on a street, is there a way to add a bike lane? I mean, we will consider that, we're certainly not ready to recommend anything like that at this point, but there's frankly a lot of parking infrastructure out there that's just not very highly utilized, that we need to think of better uses for potentially, and so I think all of that will be explored.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Mr. Rastik, do you want to go now or wait?
Well, both probably.
Okay, all right.
So, a question, I know you're talking about parking and mobility, do you mind if we talk, since the survey talked about mobility, can we talk about that? I mean, everything here is about parking, but you did mention that biking lanes downtown, and a lot of people, I drive a lot downtown, and we have a lot of bikers downtown, and I hear also citizens complain that they're biking everywhere and not in, you know, properly. And so, my question to you is, do you think that bike lanes, having a place to bike, would prevent a little bit of this more, you know, shoot from this spot to this spot, because I'm seeing that a lot? And, you know, do bike lanes help with the general order of biking?
I would say yes. So, I have done quite a bit of pedestrian and bicycle planning in my career. I live in the Twin Cities, and the Twin Cities has made a concerted effort to have a connected network of bike facilities. I think it's a little bit of if you build it, they will I think it's a little bit of if you build it, they will come to some degree. Certainly, the bike lanes need to give a sense of comfort, a sense of safety. Sometimes certain bikers don't feel safe in a bike lane. They want something more like an off-street facility. But I think having actual marked dedicated facilities, that people know, hey, I head up this way on this bike lane, and then I turn left and, and pick up that bike lane, I, I absolutely would think that, and do think that that improves flow, it improves wayfinding and connectivity.
Okay, thank you. And in your survey, did they, did anybody, or many people, mention an east-west bikeway? Because we don't have tho, a lot of those. We have a lot of north-south, but not a lot of east-west. And then, have they talked about any central city bikeway getting through the city, you know, up, you know, like Grand, Grandview or Asbury or through that central? I, I know a lot of people who bike, and I know a lot of people who have had near misses or have been hit. And so, and I can understand their caution about going out biking without, with, if we don't have the infrastructure.
Sure. I'm going to let Kenny address if he, if that was seen in the survey. But what I can say is that there are other efforts going on as it relates to biking. I know Dubuque Ford had a meeting last week, and mobility was discussed. And just to your point, Commissioner, or Councilmember Resnick, the, the east-west and north-south connections were discussed as being an idea. ECIA is also conducting a bicycle plan, and they're looking at downtown as part of that effort and trying to identify specific corridors. So I do think, I can't speak, maybe Kenny can fill in on the actual survey, but there are discussions out there about connecting both east-west and north-south through downtown.
To the question of which specific routes were, were noted in the survey, the survey was focused on, or this portion of the survey was focused on, on downtown. So respondents' comments were general as it pertained to, we would like to see more in downtown. But I do not recall like a specific notation of a north-south or east-west, though there was notation that the bluff, as, as you would expect, acts as a barrier for, for them as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. All right, we'll write down questions from this point forward, but thanks for the break. It was helpful to get some of those questions out, and keep on moving.
The, the only thing that I would say to close out that section is that everything that we've heard and reviewed thus far, they are not recommendations from the group, it's just our findings from our conversations. But thank you so much.
All right, so we're going to cover our system technical review. As a reminder, this is a review of the policies, operations, and management practices of your parking mobility system. We collected a lot of data and analyzed that data. We looked at best practices, and we can really categorize the findings of this portion of our project in one of these six categories. Off-street parking, on-street parking and curb management, we'll talk a little bit about what that means here in a second. Parking technology, really important topic. System finances, so how is this department doing from a fiscal standpoint? Information and wayfinding and mobility. So Kenny has touched on a number of these through the stakeholder process, but we also did an in-depth review on all of these areas. So I'm going to take my time on this slide, there's a lot of information here, but we worked with the city to collect parking occupancy or utilization data on a variety of dates ranging from September all the way through December. You can see the observed occupancies in the different ramp facilities on those count days. We identified ten a.m. as, as the peak time, so this is the time with the highest parking demand. So what you're seeing here are all those occupancies observed at that overall peak time. You can see the average occupancies off to the right, and then the overall parking occupancies or utilizations below, so I'll highlight that down in this sort of band. The top bar is overall ramp utilization, and then the bottom bar, bar is excluding the Port of Dubuque ramp, which is a little bit out of downtown. What is that overall ramp utilization? So key figure here is that overall, we had about one-third of ramp spaces occupied by parked vehicles. So at the peak demand, we're seeing nearly two thousand empty ramp spaces downtown in Dubuque. Any questions on this data before we move to the next slide? You can see kind of as you go through the dates, some facilities, you know, thirteen percent, seventeen percent. There were some facilities where after, let's say, three, four o'clock in the evening, we counted, you know, less than twenty cars in the entire parking ramp, you know, due to the fact that most of the folks that park in that ramp are those nine-to-five users. We talked a little bit about surface lots. So overall, the surface lots were about one-quarter occupied. So we did utilization data collection, we drove through all the surface lots, collected data, and then Ryan and Russ and their team helped us supplement that data. This is public surface lot utilization data. So about one-quarter of surface lot spaces are occupied. So three-quarters of all of our surface lot spaces are empty at that peak demand. So what are the key findings from an off-street perspective? You know, facilities are significantly underutilized. We understand there are a variety of reasons for this. One of the reasons is the depressed in-office, depressed demand from changing in-office work habits. We're seeing this in, you know, a variety of communities and clients we're working with. You know, COVID has really brought a change to how people travel and, and how often they come to the office. So we need to look for opportunities to drive up utilization of these facilities, generate more revenue, and really be more efficient about how we're using these very expensive resources. It is possible as a benchmark to, we don't see this all the time, but it's possible to get occupancies in that eighty to eighty-five percent range, you know, depending on demand conditions and technology and management of the facility, that's certainly possible. But we think that a real key ingredient here are the policies that we have in Dubuque related to permit and transient parking. So in Dubuque, over thirty percent of the ramp spaces are reserved assigned spaces. So they actually sell a permit to a specific user, give that specific user space number twelve. When that user doesn't come to work, because they only work in the office two days, it works, a week, space number twelve sits empty. We typically don't see more than ten percent of the inventory in ramps be reserved assigned. So we're almost three times that. So we think there's a, an opportunity for some more flexibility, and certainly, technology plays a big role here. Technology upgrades are a big, big priority in these facilities. There are a variety of customer service and operations and maintenance issues, which we'll talk about. We have deferred maintenance issues in the facilities. The city recently conducted a conditions assessment, identified deferred maintenance in the facilities, that's ongoing. We need to be aware of that as well. So pivoting to on-street, we also looked at on-street, we've talked a little bit about that today. We collected occupancy data on-street. So this is depicting, one of the days we collected, a busy day in September, we identified kind of that mid-morning as the peak. Overall, the occupancy or utilization downtown is about one-third of all on-street spaces are occupied. So there are pockets, you can see around the Millwork, lower main, where you can see oranges and reds, these are the higher, the block faces with higher utilization. But generally speaking, there is quite a bit of availability in the on-street system. So I kind of, we're kind of showing sort of the northern part of downtown, you can kind of zoom in and see, you can see over off to the eastern portion of the downtown around Millwork, those areas are certainly pretty busy at this time of day. And then southern portion of downtown as well. Okay, so from an on-street perspective, we think that there's a variety of impactful things that can be done to really simplify the customer and, and operator facing elements of the system. I think we talked a little bit about this earlier, related to policies and payment, you know, things like on-street rates and time limits and regulations. There's a lot of time limits out there in, in Dubuque. There's a lot of different time limits, different rates, and so it can be a bit confusing to the user. So we think there are opportunities to really simplify that, which would make things a lot easier from a city operations perspective, and just make things a little bit more equitable and convenient from a user perspective. We do also think, in addition to on-street parking, there are a variety of other demands on the curb that we're seeing increasing in cities across the U.S. I work in Omaha, and a lot of these types of commercial loading zones, people want to use curb space for parklets, which are actual streetscape parks that you're seeing pop up in communities across the United States. We think there's an opportunity for a little bit more unified management of parking beyond the curb. So actually, unifying parking and curb management is kind of a cohesive element within the city. But I will say that a chief priority on-street are these meters. They're quite old, they're quite, they're quite functionally obsolete. This is a big issue, ongoing payment collection and enforcement and maintenance issues that arise from these meters. Okay, so parking technology, we've talked a lot about this. This is an absolutely critical part of this project, perhaps one of the driving catalysts for this project. You can see some of the technology here. We'll start on the top left. You can see these are very old meters. I've never quite seen meters this old, to be honest with you. They look like they accept credit cards. I've tried the credit card slot several times, it, it doesn't, did not work for me. They, the city has to maintain quite a significant spare meter inventory. So you can see that picture of, of spare meter parts, and so they're spending time, they're spending labor swapping out those parts. You can see the ramp equipment here. So there are a variety of different types of machines in different ramps. So you'll go to different ramps, and you'll literally see different types of machines, which obviously causes confusion issues, because the user has to recognize and, and understand different types of technology. There are some elements out there that just functionally are not working at all. So we did observe pieces of equipment that just don't function, have no use out there. And then the other thing is the city's done a wonderful job to try to explain to the users how to use the technology. They've affixed signs, arrows, labels, colors to try to communicate where to put your card in, where to get the receipt, how to take payment. But that does, you know, shouldn't have to be that way, and it does cause some, some confusion issues as well. And of course, there are a host of, of operations and customer service issues that arise from this. So from a technology standpoint, really, the key findings, it's a patchwork system right now, lots of maintenance, it's functionally obsolete. A, a key item is it's not supported anymore by vendors. So when you get a piece of equipment, after a certain period of time, they will just stop supporting the equipment. So it just doesn't have that support. The city cannot call upon these vendors for support anymore, they're pretty much on their own. We heard a lot from stakeholders about payment technology and needing to improve payment technology. And probably the most important thing as it relates to technology is that the current technology really inhibits the city from pulling data about the system in real time. So they're not able, as an operation, to understand who is in the facility at a given time. You know, how many contract parkers are in the ramp? How many short-term transient parkers are in the ramp? So as a result, the city is unable to push information to the user. So you'll go to some cities, you'll see twenty spaces available, two, you know, signs outside of the ramp. The city, at this point, with the technology that it has, cannot pull that information, cannot communicate that to the user, and really can't manage the facilities in a way that we would say is in accordance with best practices. So it's sort of, at this point, it's handcuffing the city from an operations standpoint. Are there any questions on, on that? We've went over a lot before we pivot.
Let's, let's go ahead and pivot, and then we can, we'll write those questions down and be able to keep moving.
I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Eric, who is my financial specialist, he's going to talk to you about system finances for a couple minutes here.
Very, very briefly. Hello, everyone. Eric Aguit with Lockhart Consultants. I'm a director in our Chicago office. As Kevin mentioned, my focus is financial mostly, usually, a lot of financial modeling for municipalities, private entities, that sort of thing. So in Dubuque, what we've done as part of phase one is look at both current finances and also pre-COVID on a facility-by-facility basis, looked at the on-street as well, and really just sort of got a sense of what was happening. Obviously, you know, pre-COVID, a lot of your parking activity was associated with downtown office or, or nine-to-five type of employees. To some extent, that demand is still there, or at least people are still purchasing permits if the demand has not come back. But some of that has not returned, as has been, been mentioned several times. What do we do now to capitalize on the availability and the infrastructure that's, that's still there, that was built with a purpose of serving mostly downtown daytime users? So what we found, at least initially, was even pre-pandemic, with the high amount of office permit parkers or, or nine-to-five permit parkers, that the system was not self-funded, which is not uncommon for most municipalities, honestly. Only the very largest municipalities in the U.S., in Europe, wherever, typically are self-funded, because parking infrastructure is very expensive to build, to operate, to maintain, to replace technology. So it's not entirely uncommon. But we did find that Dubuque, like many other communities, other funding sources are used to support the parking system, when ideally, you would have the people that are coming to downtown, using the parking, being the ones paying for the system. So part of what we'll be doing is exploring, as Kevin mentioned, policies, rate regimes, how the technology will impact revenues and expenses, and how can we at least get the system to be more self-supporting than it currently is or than it was pre-COVID. So as I mentioned, both currently and pre-pandemic, we looked at the last few years pre-pandemic, so back to, I think, twenty-seventeen. The system has not been entirely self-supporting, like I said, because it's just very expensive to provide parking and to keep it maintained and operating. Annually, other funding sources from the city are subsidizing about two-point-three million dollars. So the user-funded portion is falling behind the expenses by about two-point-three million dollars. The good news, at least, is that the revenues have recovered to about eighty-five percent of their pre-pandemic levels, and that is largely due to some large tenants continuing to purchase permits, even for those, you know, two- or three-day-a-week employees versus all, all five-day employees. The parking division has done a great job controlling expenses and reducing operating expenses to the extent possible, given the realities of, of revenue. But as I mentioned, Dubuque is certainly not the only community with this issue, and the only community with this issue, especially post-pandemic, where revenues have really taken a hit. So I think, you know, it's not all bad news. Dubuque is not uncommon from the perspective of, you know, parking revenues and expenses. But a big focus of what we'll be doing with the next phase, in addition to the technology, is how does that technology, how do the policies that go along with it impact revenues that are generated, expenses that are incurred, and all those sorts of things, so that you all can make the best decision on what system or systems to go with, what policies to implement, and how that will impact the city moving forward. And I will pass it back to Kevin for the remainder. But looking forward to your questions on finances.
All right, so a couple other items. We are in the home stretch here. Information and wayfinding, we talked a lot about that. It was a huge theme in our stakeholder engagement. This is a critical part of any access and parking project. This really includes information, communication to users at all stages of their journey, even before they leave to come downtown. So we're talking about websites, apps, signs, other things to help communicate to the user how they can travel, how do they get to their destination once they park, once they take transit, how do they then get from that facility to their final destination? So we are seeing a lot of inconsistencies out there about, about relative, relative to color, to placement, to messaging on signs. We think there's a real opportunity for the city to brand all of the assets and really launch a unified communications and marketing campaign around how to get to downtown, how to move around downtown. I can't understate enough how much information, communications, and wayfinding was discussed really across the board in all of our stakeholder processes. And I think there's an education element here, too, that can be incorporated, related to people bicycling and watching out for pedestrians. There's just a lot of opportunity here from a information and branding and marketing perspective. So as it relates to mobility, you know, we think there are opportunities to really enhance wayfinding connectivity throughout downtown. We believe public transportation is critical, but there may be some potential service and route improvements. We talked about, you know, the youth and others that mentioned some desires for potential improvement. But the big item here is the pedestrian orientation of downtown, the need for beautification in some, in some regards.
in some regards, but really thinking about how do we embrace pedestrian-centric design as we help to move people around downtown that aren't traveling using a single occupant vehicle. So pivoting here to the last phase, just as a reminder, we are in the last half or latter portion of Phase One, we're moving into Phase Two. It's all about developing ideas and scenarios and options. We're going to be exploring those options with advisory groups that we've set up that include city staff, community partners. We hope to come back in front of this body to really vet through those options with you, get your feedback before we move on, and really finalize recommendations. And again, as a reminder, the hope is to move into an implementation phase, a technology improvement phase after this project is over. So as a quick summary, some of the areas that we're going to explore in Phase Two is sort of encompasses, hopefully, all of what you've heard here today. You know, how do we drive up parking availability and information? We need to modernize technology and incorporate data into how we're, you know, operating the system and how we're communicating information to the user. The customer, convenience of the customer, equity, system communication, getting information out to the customer, those are really big themes that we're going to be exploring as part of Phase Two. How do we ensure that we're managing assets responsibly and we're developing a system that's fiscally sustainable? And then how are we looking for opportunities to enhance pedestrian connectivity and multimodal transportation? You know, everyone is a pedestrian at some point in their journey, even if they drive and park downtown. So we heard even from a lot of folks about, you know, this notion of parking and then walking, or walking from their place of business or wherever their destination was back to their vehicle. That's really important. And then finally, how do we leverage the parking and mobility system to really promote, you know, economic vibrancy, community vibrancy? There's just a lot of potential for the parking and mobility system to be a real catalyst for continued economic development and vibrancy and quality of life in downtown. So that concludes, we are happy to take any additional questions or discussions.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Kevin, Kenny, Eric, all through. This is a really extremely helpful conversation. I think this is information we've really been looking forward to gathering here for quite a while, so we appreciate you covering that tonight. All right, so questions at this point? Keeping in mind that, and I think I should say this out loud because I think it's helpful just to reiterate what you're saying, this was the information gathering phase of this study. The solution phase is on its way, based on the information being gathered. I think that's just an important thing to point out because it's an important step in the process. We have to know what the field of play really is before we can go on and just start, you know, making changes and looking at, you know, big, taking big swings at some of this stuff. So, questions, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, first. Thank you. Several things, well, we'll keep it down to a few. First of all, I understand the idea that you want to be consistent with all the, with all the equipment in the parking garages, because when I, even in Dubuque, or when I go somewhere else, hesitant to use that parking garage because I know I'll get in, but I don't know if I can get out. And the scary part is now two or three people behind me, and I'm like trying to read things quickly and get her done, right? And so I noticed that there are several ways to get in and, I mean, to get out. They all let you in right away, but getting out is hard, yeah, in Dubuque. If you don't, I mean, for the regulars who know how to do it, you know, once I get it, that's great. My question to you, with the new technology, which you haven't decided on to recommend to us, but, you know, you were talking about knowing what's going on in the parking building or at, you know, along the parking right now. You can look at something and say, oh, you know, there's some three parking spaces right here. Is, do any of your, do any of your partners or do any of your places that you work with include perhaps a web app or a widget that, you know, that you can put in? If I own, you know, a place downtown, that people say, well, where's the parking? Like, well, Five Flags. You look, you can go to Five Flags website and say, oh, look at that. There are 300 parking spaces that I can head to. Let me head to that spot because I know there. And it's live, it's right now. Do, is that possible?
Yeah, I will say, so to, before I answer that, we'll say, one of the really important things we heard is that there are many folks that are reluctant to use the ramps because of what you described. They don't know how to use it, it's confusing, they're afraid they're going to have people honking at them, et cetera. There are technologies out there. I will say it's very, it's much easier to do what you're talking about from a data perspective in an off-street facility than it is on-street. So the on-street parking, it's a little more challenging, you have to set up sensors or cameras, and they monitor spaces, and they can push that information out to apps, websites, et cetera. But a modern, what we call parking access, revenue control, or parks equipment, a modern system will be able to get information that then the operator can push out to, when I say push out, I mean, push out to a sign, like a static sign that maybe you drive by and you see to a website in real time, to an app, absolutely. It's something that is out there that, when you're in that technology procurement phase, when you're out to bid for technology, that's one of the things that you can articulate to the vendor community, to say, hey, when you come with your proposals, make sure to include that as an option because we want that in the city. So that's something that we would be working with the city on.
And I was only going to add that there's all levels of that. So there are space by space, you could tell every single space in the facility, I know that if I'm coming, space 24 is open. Then there's also level by level, there's entire facilities. So we will explore the gamut of options, and then there will be, you know, functionality, pricing associated, all those sorts of things, so you can make the decision on, do we need for every facility to know every single space? Or are we good knowing that there's 40, 50, 60, you know, a more general number of spaces, similar to the on-street? You know, can we tell when there's availability here? Maybe not exactly which space, but there's availability along this block? We'll explore all those technologies and provide the options along with what each might cost.
We'll say, just to emphasize that one of the biggest, most important things related to the technology is being able to get data to arm the city's parking division, to operate ramps in a way where we may not necessarily need to sell as many reserved spaces. So there are ways to sell, many, many cities do this. You sell a permit to somebody, it doesn't give them a reserved numbered assigned space, but it gives them and guarantees them access to the facility, right? But the city at this point, in order to operate a facility in that manner, they have to know at any given time, you know, how many contract parkers, how many short-term parkers are in a facility, so they can kind of calibrate the occupancy and the oversells almost in real time on a daily basis and really collect that information. So right now, the city, in its current state of technology, cannot operate a system like that. So there's just a lot of emphasis here in Dubuque on reserved assigned parking, which should be part of the program, but doesn't necessarily have to be the only contract option available.
Great, thank you. My last question is, I appreciate that you have, you're talking about multi-generational parking, and I just know some people still want to stick in quarters, and I'm glad that you were doing that. Is that pretty, is it pretty standard in most cities that they continue with that multi-generational?
Hundred percent. So we just helped, I'm from Twin Cities University of Minnesota, upgrade all their technology, and they have these new fancy machines, they take credit card but also take coin. So it's very, very common that even in the most modern equipment, whether it's on-street equipment or off-street equipment, it would still accept coin. Now, not paper money, that's going to be way more expensive from a operations perspective, but absolutely coin is always an option. In addition to credit card, in addition to, and sometimes you have QR codes, you have Google Pay, Apple Pay can be integrated in some of these machines, but yes, always, always coin options available.
Great, thank you, and I appreciate, what an accelerated, I love your accelerated calendar there. I mean, things are moving quickly, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Self.
Just a quick, a quick question. I realize this was Phase One, the public input phase, but if people still want to give input, can they still take the survey? Can they still reach out to you? Do they just reach out to us? Or how can they continue to provide input?
Great question. As it pertains to the online survey, just to make sure that we had a hard stop with the facts that we were presenting or the stats that we were presenting, we did close the online portion, but they are still able to reach out to the team, as it were. We're always looking to hear more from anybody that wants to talk parking with some parking nerds, which I lovingly call all of us. But also, if anybody reaches out to you with specific comments, please pass those along to us as well. Would love to continue hearing those.
We are looking to do an additional public event, probably when it gets a little warmer out. We was just talking to Steve Sampson Brown about a potential option, so definitely take a look out for those as well.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Spring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You guys do this all the time, so you have a good understanding of a community of our size, and the geography, and the layout, and the number of facilities that we have. Do we have ample parking?
I would say, I can comfortably say there's enough parking in Dubuque, yes. I think, given some of these numbers, I mean, the highest utilization we observed was 63%. You know, typically, when we go into a community, we kind of have an internal joke where it's like we can tell them what the occupancy is before we even collect the data, just driving around. And it's typically in that 50% to 60% range overall. And so, you know, I think to see utilizations in the teens, it's pretty, pretty low. So we need to just think about, not only the technology and the policies and how we're managing these facilities, but hopefully over time, as we're, you know, generating activity and development, I mean, frankly, we just need demand generators, right? I mean, what brings people? So Five Flags ramp, for example, is one of our lower utilization facilities. How do we continue to develop activity, housing, bring new businesses downtown, and continue to try to drive that efficiency up? Because you'd like to see these levels, you know, not really dip below that 50% range, because you're talking about a really expensive asset, it's almost like buying an expensive car and not ever driving it. So definitely opportunities both off-street and on-street, but it starts with the technology. I mean, they're really, the city cannot move forward in the way that it needs to without that upgraded technology.
And I did just want to add, Kevin mentioned it, just figuring out how to unlock the value that's there. Dubuque does benefit from the fact that you've made a lot of the investment in infrastructure already. There's a lot of communities we go to that, when developers come to town, they're struggling with, how can I afford to make my project work while also building parking? They're looking for, you know, the municipality to contribute something, that to have a public slash private facility, where, as you all have, facilities that are existing, so long as we can get new technology, get some of the deferred maintenance taken care of, that could provide an opportunity for developers to come in and have their projects penciled out, because they don't have to factor in, you know, $30,000 for a new parking space that they have to build themselves.
And I would say frankly, in an area like the Millwork District, I mean, you really can't, you can't put parking underneath those buildings, you're not going to tear down these historic buildings, and so you need to look for any and all opportunities you can to squeeze out parking from, you know, anything available in your system.
Ballpark, because construction, that's what I do. Not holding you to this. If we were to just theoretically leave our current policies the way they are, not change anything, just update our technology, what are we looking at? To like make our, you know, basically do a little of what Mr. Resnick mentioned, put a sign up on the building that says there's so many available spaces?
Let's start with the, let's start with the ramps first. So in a ramp, I mean, you're talking a few hundred thousand dollars to upgrade the technology in a ramp. So multiply that by six or seven, correct me if I'm wrong on any of these things, you know, a piece of in-lane equipment, so when you're driving in, take a ticket, when you're driving out, you pay, that's $25,000, $30,000. If you've been to cities where you park and you walk up to a pay station, you know, that might be another $20,000, $30,000. An on-street meter itself, you know, can run anywhere from 500 to 2,000. Some cities have those kiosks where you pay and it's multi-spaced, and you enter your space number, and there's just one maybe per block. That might be $10,000 or $15,000. But then when you start talking about these add-ons, like the connectivity, the signage, that's definitely beyond that. So it's possible for, you know, I can't do the math in my head, but you're talking a few hundred thousand dollars for one ramp to upgrade the technology. And then you're also arming yourself with the technology to collect payment and to also do the enforcement of your on-street environment as well. Anything to add on that? You good?
The only thing I would add, it relates to cost, but the ongoing maintenance and upkeep. So there's all different constructs for that, you know, self-perform maintenance, service contracts, all those sorts of things. What you can do, and what we will do as part of the technology procurement phase is identify the city's needs, wants, do they want to do their own maintenance, or would they prefer to farm that out? Is there some kind of dividing line? Are they, you know, is the Parking Division okay with just some spare parts that can be changed out? And that will all be priced in, so you can see for X period of time, here's the initial investment, here's the expected ongoing cost, and then here's what's still the city's responsibility. And I think the important thing is, you know, replacing these systems obviously is not inexpensive, but it's something that is not done very frequently. So it's not an investment now and then a different investment five years from now, it's what system can we put in place that can keep up to date as technology changes? Because obviously, we know it does.
One important point to reiterate is that after this project is over, the hope is to put together a request for proposal for new technology. And so the city has the ability to really specify and articulate all of the requirements. So anybody in the vendor community, and there are a lot of, as you can imagine, on and off-street parking equipment vendors, we are very vendor-neutral as a consultant, but we can help, you know, you navigate that process, but you're able to articulate exactly what you're looking for. Do you want the dynamic signage? How does the technology have to patch into your existing IT infrastructure? So that's all taken care of through that RFP process.
Mr. Jones?
Are vendors leasing equipment? Where you could do a 10-year program where everything gets replaced and updated without the big investment?
Yes, that does exist. Not all vendors offer that, some do. Obviously, if a vendor is leasing equipment, there's a finance cost associated, just like you finance a car versus purchasing outright, but there are options for that. It could limit the options available, the number of vendors that would actually respond to an RFP, but if that is a requirement of the city, then that can be written in, and vendors will definitely get creative, especially with a system that is, you know, seven ramps, on-street technology. It's not a small project, so they'll be eager to pursue it.
Yeah, I don't know how interested I'd even be in that, but it might come with the opportunity to keep the equipment fresh.
Yeah, I mean, there's different models, too. I mean, there's operator models, some cities elect to farm out the whole operation. There's, I've seen, if you go to New Orleans, they have a premium parking down there, and they basically, this vendor comes into all their facilities and puts the premium parking branding, all the premium parking technology in there, and then there's kind of a revenue share situation from that perspective. The, I would say, the software side of the current technology is all typically cloud-based software, as opposed to like on-premises servers these days. So lots of different options that we'll consider.
Ms. Russell?
So I know we're entering the fund phase, as you called it. And so we're not to solutions, but just so that I have this correctly as far as our goals, Eric, I believe you said there's a $2.3 million deficit that we have. Is that in a 12-month period right now?
It is, and that's a subsidy to the Parking Fund, correct?
Got it, okay. And so you use the term fiscally sustainable, which does not mean self-sustainable, correct?
Correct, yes. In order to be self-sustaining, the level that parking rates would need to be in Dubuque aren't feasible, just, you know, given demand generators, where the parking rates have been historically, and like I mentioned, there's nearly no community where the parking rates that are charged are enough to pay for the infrastructure.
Would it be a realistic expectation to say that we could cut 50% of the $2.3 million by investing in new technology?
I don't know if I'm comfortable saying that yet, because we haven't really dug into not only the technology piece, but also policy changes. As Kevin mentioned, there just recently was or is still ongoing that facility condition assessment to identify was or is still ongoing that facility condition assessment to identify, you know, outstanding deferred maintenance. So I'm not comfortable saying that that could be cut in half. I'm, what I'm hopeful for and what we're going to be targeting is just some amount of reduced subsidy. And also for the future, what needs to happen so it doesn't reach that level again or so, you know, facilities and technology don't deteriorate to the point where they need significant, you know, maintenance or replacement, that sort of thing.
I would just add, you could imagine a scenario where new technology allows you to sell event parking. Maybe new technology allows you to extend operations later in the day. Maybe it allows you to, some, a lot of cities will collect data, particularly on-street data on an annual basis. And the areas where the demand is the highest, the price goes up in those areas. And in the areas where the demand is lowest on-street, the price actually goes down within a pre-approved kind of range, right? So the technology allows you to do all of these things from a policy standpoint to look at improving access for the user and in some ways, making it more equitable. I would argue that cities that have done, for example, demand-based pricing, there are always areas where the price is actually going down. So you can tell users that, hey, you're lowering the price in many areas. So the new technology allows you to kind of get more sophisticated and there's more potential for revenue from that regard.
And then one more question, but I'm going to wheel it all the way back to Kenny. So you had mentioned the educators talking about the ability for children, specifically those children who don't have access to vehicles that utilize busing and those modes of transportation. The goal, I assume, that I want to clarify, that those educators felt that we should extend hours later on our bus system or earlier on our bus system? Was that the gestalt of what that conversation was with educators?
First and foremost, good word, gestalt. The, the takeaway from that conversation was individuals, and when I say individuals, I mean students that are least likely to be able to participate in those extracurricular activities. One of the contributors to why they weren't able to participate in, whether it be band after school or sport or something else, was they didn't have the mechanism for moving from school to home in a safe way after hours. So what they were requesting was if there was an opportunity of extending later, how students would be able to get home, they would be in support of that.
Thank you.
No, thank you. And if I may, I, you asked a question about how individuals would be able to engage with, with us after the fact. And I explained the what, but I didn't explain how. The website is still up and, and running, even though the survey is down on the MoveDBQ website off of the city. If you scroll down, there is a, a provision for individuals to leave a comment. And we'd love to see more people leave comments if they have one.
There's a map feature that folks can add comments to and then an actual drop a comment box as well.
Wonderful. Thank you for adding that. Ms. Farber, I want to leave you out. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you were talking about demand-based pricing, one of the things that I think is up and coming would be the electric vehicle charging stations. And as you know, that would be hopefully something that would help with the funding and the revenue generation. Are there assessments going on on the parking ramps or on streets for the opportunity for the city to have some kind of a network of stations?
We will be looking at that as part of this process, just as a Phase Two element, just considering how do we, you know, think about those opportunities. There are a variety of options from kind of a ownership model. How do you charge? What are the policies? Who pays for the power? So that's certainly, you know, those are some items that we're going to be considering as part of Phase Two. Is there any other comments with EV charging? But apparently we have no other efforts related to EV charging currently.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I'm also...
Go ahead.
I'm also looking forward to the, what you're calling the wayfinding, marketing and communications campaign, because I think that would be just really simplifying it for everybody so that the look and feel is the same. And if you use one ramp, then you're able to use the, the other ramp successfully without hesitation, as Mr. Resnick had pointed out. So I look forward to hearing more about that unified marketing and communications campaign.
Yeah. I mean, I would say it's a different animal just because it's a much bigger city. But I, we do work a lot with Omaha. So they have a, it's called Park Omaha. They have a very unified, I'd encourage folks to take a look at it. It's the same color, it's the same font, it's the same, you know, icon, iconic, cannot say that word.
Iconography.
Iconography, the branding, the messaging, it's all unified across the system. So no matter where you are, whether you're on a website, whether you're driving, whether you're picking up a scooter, I know we don't have those necessarily here in town, but it's all unified under that brand. And so it really helps create that recognition for folks that are coming and moving around downtown.
I just think it'll be a great enhancement. So thank you for your creativity. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So again, you know, unless I think of a question in the next two minutes here as I'm talking, I, I think I've had all of them answered by the great questions that have been asked here by my colleagues. Thank you again for your patience in, in lasting through us with this. And everybody, that goes for everybody. I know we had to stop there for a little while from a technology snafu. So thank you. Thank you for all this work. This, if you can't tell from the nature of our questions, this is something we hear about a lot. We've been waiting for this discussion. And I think tonight, even though we spent a lot of time talking, was time very well spent for the city of Dubuque. We, we really have been waiting to see what we're finding, what people have to say in a, in a manner that isn't just, you know, catching us on the street and talking to us about it, but, you know, really digging into the data about how we can do this. We are excited for the fun phase, too, of looking at what's going to happen next and looking to see what's coming here. So hopefully we have seen the start of a very good discussion here and we're looking forward to much more of it. So thank you for the time tonight and for all your work on this.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. So I think what we'll do now is we will take a moment for each of us here and then we'll transition to our, our next work session. So if you want to come on up and get set up, we'll get started here in a few minutes.